Welcome, everybody. We'll give everyone a second to settle in, but we're starting the, what is this? The April 24th meeting of the Farmington School Board. Thanks for joining us. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad I was a little hairy getting in here. There's so much activity out in the lobby with the student, what do you call it? Student Expo or Student Showcase? Really cool to see everyone here tonight and actually to see some of the displays I saw when I was at Dodge Middle School for parent conferences tonight and to learn a little bit, some more about the activities. I know we'll talk about that more. In the meantime, we've got an agenda before us. It was published last week. Is there any questions about the agenda? If not, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Doyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. First item on that agenda is good news from the superintendent.
Thank you Chair Christensen, members of the board and members of the community and our learners tonight. We had a nice crowd for the follow-up to the school showcases, which were outstanding as the last three have been. So we're very fortunate to have Meadowview, Riverview, and Dodge with us tonight. So I'll try to keep this short so we can get to our staff members to share about those showcases. But I just wanted to give a quick legislative update. We still haven't had much change since the last time we met. The House did pass their omnibus bill on Friday. For those of you that haven't been paying attention or don't quite remember what that is, the big parts of it is a 4% increase on the per pupil formula next year, 2% the following year, and then a 50% reduction in the special ed cross subsidy. Other than that, there really haven't been any changes to what has been introduced over the last few weeks. There's still some language that is concerning to a number of school districts. It really revolves around additional unfunded mandates and specifically one item which could end up requiring us to spend an additional $1 million. So even though we hear about investments and things like that, there's a potential that it could end up costing us money in the long run. The Senate bill is being discussed on the floor today. Chair Christiansen and I were going back and forth. We haven't heard yet. We assume that it will pass as well. Theirs is a little bit different than the House. It has a 4% increase next year, 5% the following year, and then a gradual reduction in the special ed cross subsidy starts at 40%, then goes to 47%, then goes to 60%. So there's some parts of that that actually are much more helpful to our district than the House bill. We do not expect any major changes. And again, that contains some similar language that can end up costing us money. People are probably wondering what happens next. Those bills have the same spending targets, about $2.2 billion, but they don't allocate it the same way. So they will get a conference committee together in the next couple of days to start out hammering those changes. So if people are into advocating, advocacy is still necessary at this point in time because there is still something that could change, that we would like to see change. I want to give a shout out and congratulations to Vicki Giegrich. So she was Farmington's Teacher of the Year, and she's a second grade teacher at FES. Had the opportunity to kind of share in her celebration last week after school. So congratulations to Vicki, a very deserving teacher in one of our elementary buildings. And then while we were doing that, Ms. Paulson just wanted me to give a reminder that FES is doing their fourth grade wax museum on May 11th. I know that she mentioned that was here, but she asked me to put another plug in. So if you're looking to check out that activity, that'll be going on. We did make a hire last week, and you'll see in the consent agenda that we are bringing forward Ryan Meyer as our new high school principal. So Ryan currently serves as the assistant principal at Mankato West, and we are really excited for what he's going to bring for our learners and our community. If you didn't have a chance to see, and I don't know, we didn't really connect on this like we usually do. So if I'm stepping on your toes, too bad because I get to go first. But Little Shop of Horrors started off this last weekend, so it is the Spring Musical at FHS. And there are two more shows if you haven't had a chance to see that. Seven o'clock at BMS, Bachman at the auditorium in Bachman, and this Friday and Saturday. And you can go to FarmingtonTigers.com to get tickets. Here's another little thing that people may not know, but we have art students that compete in Minnesota State High School League competition. My son, who's a junior in college, actually competed in this in ceramics and stuff. And our art department at the high school took 16 learners down to Rochester over the weekend to compete in kind of that section competition. And we are actually sending two kids onto the state meet. So they're best in category, Kaya Jackson in computer-based artwork, and then Karly Shaktel in ceramics. And then of the total 16, we had eight kids that were in the superior, which is the highest. And then the other eight kids were in the excellent, which is in the next level. So we have a district-wide art show, but if your kid is not involved in that, and sometimes you don't get deep into our buildings, some of the artwork, and that's some of it, a lot of the artwork that our kids put together is pretty dang impressive. So if you have an opportunity, you're walking around the high school, if you head down on that first level, and they have a couple of displays, there's some really, really neat things there that are on display. So this is kind of a cool opportunity for them to get to do that. And then the last thing, I know this is always really forefront on people's minds because I've been getting some emails on it the last couple of weeks, but when is homecoming for 2023? So we have announced when homecoming is because we finally got some of our fall schedules, and that will be the week of October 2nd through the 6th. So if you're a planner, that's going to be homecoming week next year. So that is all I have, Chair Christensen.
All right, well, I'm glad to have that issue resolved.
Well, now we know.
All right, thanks Superintendent Burke. Next item on the agenda is the Student School Board Representative Updates. We'll start with you, Emma.
All righty, so if you guys have been following along and anybody's on their toes dying to hear the winner of the March Madness Book Tournament, well, I'm here to update you. The winner was, drumroll, The Book Thief. This historical fiction book written by Marcus Lusick has clearly proven to be a favorite here at FHS, and it was going up against a lot of other good contestants. Now that we got the important stuff out of the way, I wanted to talk about last Friday. So Mr. Burke accompanied Kennedy and I all the way to Columbia Heights High School for a school board student representative networking event. We had the opportunity to test our capabilities with some team activities and exercises, as well as educate ourselves on the importance of sustainability in schools and community, and then most importantly, network and exchange ideas with other student representatives. We shared with schools that carry as many 80 people in their graduating class to thousands of schools, or thousands of people among a few different schools. So we had a lot of different perspectives. And then, that said, we heard some truly amazing people talk about some of the common challenges that we face across the state, and then as well as some unheard of solutions. So on behalf of Kennedy and I, we'll try our best to uphold the information we learned and then continue to outreach for the development of ideas and solutions, and as well as to advocate for our school's biggest problems. And then I just have one more thing, and that is Teen Lit Con. So this coming Saturday, the 29th, Farmington students are invited to Teen Lit Con. It's a free, day-long celebration of reading and meeting both well-known locally known artists as well as nationally recognized artists. So it's a really cool event. A permission slip is needed, so that can be found on School Ag, and it must be turned into Mystica at the Media Center. Bussing will be provided at Bachman Middle School at 9:00 a.m. and will return by 3:45 p.m. If you have any questions at all, do not hesitate to reach out to Mystica via School Ag or Media Center. And then I know that some English teachers are going as well. So if you have an English teacher currently, go ask them about it. I'm sure they know. And I'll hand it over to you, Kennedy.
Well, hi, everyone. Thanks for coming today. I like to say right now that everyone is trying their very best to finish the school year. A little over six weeks until it's over, students are on that grind to finish really strong. Speaking of finishing the school year, last Tuesday, juniors took the ACT test. I'd like to give a shout out to all the people who took the test, as well as the staff who go into proctoring those tests. We use almost all the classrooms, and students can expect those results within the next two to five weeks. Now, more testing next week marks the beginning of our AP testing. If you don't know what AP classes are, Advanced Placement courses are a great opportunity for students to take some college-level courses throughout the school year, and then take an exam at the end of the school year to earn potential college credit. So good luck to any students taking those tests, and good luck to any parents who might have to support some students in their journeys. Another thing I'd like to talk about is Link Crew. So Link Crew is an organization that is composed of juniors and seniors to help the incoming freshman class feel welcome to the high school. It's really similar to the web program in the middle schools, if you're familiar with that. Applications for the Link Crew are now open, and they're open up until next Monday, so one more week. So for all current sophomores and juniors, it's a great opportunity for you to earn some leadership skills and have some experience in that as well. One more reminder for juniors and seniors to register for prom. The cost today is $60, and it closes May 7th. There are no exceptions to the deadline. So if you're a student or you would like to attend prom, the time is now. And then, as Mr. Burke mentioned, FES Theater just put on The Little Shop of Horrors. I was able to watch the opening night, and everything was down to a T. The amount of time that the cast has put into the performance was astronomical, and it really shows. It was an exciting and lively atmosphere, and all of the community members should really come and see it. I was able to speak with the director, Mrs. Stout, and she gave me a quote about how far the show has gone. She says, "Overall, opening weekend was super successful. It was a lot of fun and had a lot of energy. People had really good things to say about it." And I would have to agree with her. I do have really good things to say about it. If you don't want to miss out on an awesome production, you're lucky because there are two more showings, this Friday and Saturday at both seven o'clock. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Got a quick statement. The Consent Agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted upon with one motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request it be pulled from the Consent Agenda, and it will be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item which they wish to discuss? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Motion by Dwyldy, second by Doyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go. Next is, let's see, Reports and Communications. So that's our principals. So let's see, our folks from Riverview, Meadowview, and Dodge Middle School.
Do I need to move this, maybe? All right, I am Kim Grange. I'm the principal at Riverview Elementary School. And we are here to talk about Ignite, which is a program that we piloted this year. And it really supports our mission with providing different resources to our students using their spark and their interests. And so I have a few people here that are going to share. Logan, Nathan, and Aphelia. And then I have Mrs. Schultz, who's a kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Gambucci, second grade, and Mr. Woody, who is fifth grade, well, fourth, fifth grade. All right, so we will have, I'm going to have them share first. All right, do you want me to ask you the questions? Okay, so what was your activity that you did? You might have to get, do you want them to come around front?
Sure.
So you can see them. Yeah, let's go this way. Here we go, right there. What was your first activity that you did?
Send community projects.
Okay, and what was yours?
Cracking investigation.
And what was yours?
Tie blankets.
And what was your favorite part?
Raising so many dogs to school and communities.
Nice.
What was your favorite part?
I got to look through microscope and like look through all sorts of pairs and stuff.
Pairs and stuff. Openly, what was your favorite part?
I liked to make.
You liked to make your tie. Like, did you want to share that? Do you want to pull it up?
Yeah, we want to see.
Pizza blanket.
Excellent. I love it.
Is it nice and toasty like a pizza?
Well, Logan, what was one thing you learned?
Don't do stuff.
And support reading. Nathan, what was one thing you learned?
I learned like putting eight on paper. It would like be like arches, rolls, and stuff like that.
Your thumbprint?
Yeah.
Yeah, that they're all different.
I learned how to make it.
How to make your blanket? Okay, and what's your next activity that you're going to do?
Pickleball.
Pickleball. Okay, what's yours, Nathan?
Young Jedi game.
Young Jedi game. Hmm, what's yours?
And I'm going to do it again.
And then I also have, so then we have Mrs. Schultz, Mrs. Gambucci, and Mr. Woody, and their hair is blue too. So if you want to come back here, you can come in here.
So our why really ties into the district's strategic plan, but also our mission of igniting the spark and interest of our students. And so when we did this the first time, we did it as a pilot program where we had roughly 294 students participate in about 13 classes. And we're starting another round of Ignite on Wednesday. And we have 465 students participating with 20 different class options. The options range from tie blankets to pickleball, to golf club making, to baking, to paint pouring, to Legos. We really tried to get a gambit of student sparks and interests. And I just have one little quote about sparks and interests and why they're so important. Sparks are what get a young person to look up from their handheld device, jump out of bed in the morning, and feel connected and inspired by the world around them. When students know and act upon their sparks and have adults that support them, they often do better in school, develop important life skills, and feel more positive. And that's our why.
No, I just want to share some examples of like things that we did. If you come into the room, I've got a lot of fourth and fifth graders now that weren't part of the Spark Program, and they'd walk by to go to recess and see the sparks flying from the saw blade. Those masks we wore for COVID actually come in handy because they are a shield. I do use that with the kids. But this is one of the golf clubs that some of the kids helped me build as an example because we have go through a fitting process where they measure each other, figure out what length of putter they need, order the components, and all the kids, 25, 35 bucks. Parents send money in, and they go home with the putter that they got to go through the experience with. Super fun, and it's not just about the kid's spark. It's fun to be able to share our spark and hobbies with the kids, so really cool.
And these are my students. And so I just wanted to say, the biggest thing was, is every day when you came in and you saw it was an Ignite Day, what did you think? Woo-hoo, right? So I just have to say, all day long, we talk about being good listeners and look at how excellent they're doing. But you can actually talk right now. Were you excited about it?
Yeah.
And when is our next one coming up? It's on our calendar, have you noticed? Nathan, you know, when is it? On Wednesday. So it was all about the relationships made. I had a lot of my students that I've had in second grade in the past or kindergarten. I've taught a couple of different grade levels. So it was just fun to see them make that connection again and just hear the excitement of the kids that were coming into my classroom for what we were doing. And then when my homeroom class would return, and they were just bubbling with excitement to tell us about all the things that they've learned. So it has really been a grand success, so just wanted to share that.
One o'clock Wednesday, come on over.
Hello, everybody. I'm Becky Bykin, and I'm the principal at Meadowview Elementary. And I'm here today to introduce Kelsey Odell, Sarah Johnson, Amy Lee Vlad, and Mari Dear, who have been instrumental in starting a program called Hispanic Heritage. Well, it just started in, it just started in March, so we've only had like three sessions. But it's a Hispanic Heritage mentorship that goes between Meadowview and the high school. So they'll tell you a little bit about it and what they've learned in the past month and half.
Okay, I'm first. So hi, I'm Kelsey Odell. I teach kindergarten at Meadowview. This idea started about last year. I had a lot of Spanish speakers in my kindergarten class, and Mari Dear came and visited and did some projects with my kindergartners. We had one kiddo in particular who was like the most charismatic five-year-old you will ever meet in your entire lives. And turns out that Mari knows a few members of the family, and this kiddo's mom is part of a community group that offers some insight into different things that we're working on. And she is also a Farmington grad, I believe. Do you know the year?
I don't know the year.
Okay, so she's a Farmington grad, and she was talking about just how our district's changing and how experiences she wished she would have had and hopes for that she has for her kid. So we talked this year about what would something look like? What type of opportunities could we provide for Hispanic Heritage students? And Mari is doing a lot of research on this topic and using some Farmington demographic data. And one of the things we noticed was that our Latinx population does not have the same graduation rate as others. So this project started off with, what a great way to give our kindergartners examples that look like them in their school setting. So once a month, due to scheduling changes, it changed a little bit. But we've been alternating in-person and virtual meets between the kindergartners and the Hispanic Heritage speakers and learners at the high school. So they've come to Meadowview and done activities such as just get to know yous. We've done some like gameplay and purposeful play because play is a big thing in kindergarten. We need to have those social skills. So the high schoolers have been helping with that. We've done some paper pencil. The high schoolers have done virtual read-alouds with picture books in English and Spanish. And some of the things that I've noticed with some of our kindergartners that were a little bit more timid at the start of the year, I know I've shared this story with a few of you. But I have one little guy in my classroom this year who has just been very shy and very soft-spoken the entire year. The first circle time that we did with the high schoolers involved, not only did this kiddo start speaking Spanish, but he did so at a volume I have not heard him this entire year. And it was so amazing to just, I think Sarah Johnson and I co-teach, so she knows him just as well as I do. And we both looked at each other like, where did that come from? Like, I didn't know his lungs could produce that much volume. And ever since that day, he has been still himself, but more outgoing. And he has just been like this ray of sunshine in the classroom. Like, I've actually had to tell him, let's bring her inside voice. And I never thought I'd have to say that to this kid. So it's been really nice to see some of that personality come out and that comfort. And some of the kindergartners, they're not in my room. We have about 18 or 19 kindergartners at Meadowview in four classrooms that speak Spanish at home. And I obviously don't have all of them. But the community that started to form in the kindergarten pod between all of these kids, they're greeting me in Spanish. I speak, oops, sorry, I speak Spanish but not fluently. So they're speaking to me in Spanish. They're using their home language more in the classroom. And it's just really incredible to see these kiddos just bringing their home lives into the building. So I don't know if you want to share something?
So I'm Amy. This is my third year teaching the heritage Spanish class at the high school. We have two classes, a Level 1 and a Level 2, 3. And it's been really fun working with the kindergartners to see the high schoolers in a different light. I think for them to see each other in a different light, working with small kids, and for me to see different sides of their personality. And I, we've talked about for them of like, what would this have been like for you if you were, when you were smaller, to see kids who were older and looked like you and be able to play with you and interact? So this idea of leadership for them, of you are the role models that these students are looking up to, also gives them something, it helps them see themselves differently in their work and the work we're doing in the classroom. So today, they split into groups and decided on which places in the high school would be good to highlight for the kindergartners of this is what it's like at high school. This is what high school looks like. This is, you know, where you'll be going someday. And then they took little video clips and introduced, you know, this is this space, and what should we do here? And it was just fun to see one of them make the video, you know, so kindergartners! And it was just like, oh my gosh! Like, so it's been a blast, and I hope that we can continue it. I know it's been really good for the high school students too.
Excellent.
The one other thing I would add to that is we have a couple of kindergartners that have pares with them throughout the day for behavior support. And when we have been doing this mentorship group, when the high schoolers have come over, these kiddos have not needed their pares in the room with them. The pares are around if necessary, but they are just so invested in the high schoolers and their mentors that are around them that we don't even need that pair of support with us to help out. And the poster that we had out there has been kind of laying on my table in my classroom the last few days in anticipation of this event. And all of my other students, the older students who are not kindergartners, have come into my room and just been looking at the poster and looking at these pictures and wanting to be a part of this and wanting to have that connection with the high schoolers. And so we're hoping to expand this eventually, but it's just been a really cool thing to start and see how it's played out.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mari Dear, Equity and Personalized Learning for the District. And my role in this has really been as a connector of folks. I put the idea out there, and then Kelsey, Amy, Sarah have all run with it. And I wanted to take a minute just to say thank you to the administrators, both at FHS and Becky at Meadowview, because they, once they understood the potential of the project, they greenlit that really quickly for us as an opportunity for our Hispanic Latino population of learners. So I think it's been, it's been awesome. We are hoping to expand it. We're looking also to engage some of our partners at Bachman and Dodge with elementary partnerships that are in buildings near them. So we'll keep you posted on updates, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are tough acts to follow. Chair Christensen, members of the board, I am Andy Nelson, principal at Dodge Middle School. And I'm here to speak to you tonight a little bit about, I'm going to start with our mission statement, our strategic framework, because I think this grounds us in everything we do at Dodge, and share how I believe we made this come alive in March and with some of the projects that you saw this evening. So I'm going to read this. "The mission of Dodge Middle School, a flexible, learning-centered community that transforms the educational system to serve the uniqueness of each learner, is to cultivate individual academic and personal growth." So what we want to highlight tonight, and we have several staff members that couldn't be here to speak to this, is about a year ago, we started to reflect on our conference model. And conferences at the middle school, we've had variety models, right? Drop-in, learner-led conferences. But we felt that our learners needed a way to demonstrate their learning to their parents in the community. So what we did is, is we spent a lot of time planning and thinking about what this might look like, and we ended up calling our night in March, the Celebration of Learning. So on March 9th, Chair Christensen was there, and we invited in our families to experience really their child's learning by visiting classrooms. So kind of flipping that conference model, putting it on the kid. Our teachers had either one of two things, a learning experience going on in their classroom, right? So learners may have come into the math classroom and worked through math problems with their parent or explained a math process. We had science teachers doing labs. A huge highlight was a strawberry DNA kind of lab that parents engaged, or family members engaged with their learner. And we had evidence, learner evidence on the walls throughout Dodge Middle School. And what we really wanted this night to be, again, was a celebration. So we brought in food trucks. And what really made the night come together and what I'm super proud of is what you experienced tonight. So we all, part of this, we had a celebration of cultures. And this was a purely learner-led voice and choice idea. So they came to, a group came to Ms. Hogan, one of our counselors, and said, we want to share with, it started with, we want to share with our classmates something about our culture. We said, well, let's loop that into the experience for the celebration of learning. So they spent, we have a flex time at Dodge Middle School, which is a portion, two days a week in the morning of some student choice, both morning of some student choice, both support and enrichment, but also extension and community. And they spent several flex sessions brainstorming with Ms. Hogan and Ms. Van Summer and our, one of our, our teachers around this, this experience. So we, it was a pretty blank slate. We said, share, and you're going to have an opportunity to share about your culture with our community at the Celebration of Learning. So like I said, two staff members facilitated the project that took several flex sessions. And what I mean it, made it really come together. What you experienced tonight, we were trying to replicate what that evening felt like at Dodge Middle School, right?
Tough to do.
That, making that strategic intent come alive, right? Come alive and showcase what we do at Dodge every single day. Hard to do, but I think our kiddos did an incredible job tonight, right? The music, we had it set up in our main hallway, so all families kind of came into this high-energy celebratory moment for our kiddos. And like I said, we had music, we had food there, and it just really brought the evening together. And something that I'm, I'm super proud of for our kiddos, to, to share some of their experiences and some of their culture, not only with, with their, with their classmates, with our staff, but also with our community. So something we are really proud of and planning to continue into next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The students did a great job tonight, too, but the music and everything else that was kind of, you know, pumping through the halls of Dodge that, that night of the Celebration of Learning was, I'm just saying, that, that part's hard to replicate here at City Hall. Anyway, any other questions or comments? All right. Our next item on the agenda, oh, do we need a motion to accept reports and communications? Thank you.
So moved.
Motion by Gorman, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. So our next item is administrative action. It's approval of non-renewal or termination of probationary teachers. Mary Ann?
Good evening, Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. Tonight, I will be asking you to approve the action item to non-renew 20 of our probationary teachers. Most of these teachers are being non-renewed because of, they had a special permission on their license. And so many of those people may end up getting rehired pending approval of an appropriate license for 23, 24. And then a number of them, based on our staffing process that you've all gone through and passed the budget parameters, all of our building principals had to staff their buildings. There are some that didn't have a position going into next year. And then a couple of other small items, or small reasons that people might not have been renewed. So this is a, a pretty typical number of staff members that get re, non-renewed each year. Many of them will be rehired. We have started posting for opening positions, but just sometimes they don't match up exactly with the subject area or license that the person has. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. Otherwise, there is a resolution before you to non-renew these identified probationary teachers.
Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contracts of probationary teachers with the complete resolution appearing in the minute book.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes. That completes the administrative actions. We have a, a couple of policies to review in our next agenda item. These were items that might have been on the agenda back in March, but were held for some, for some questions. The policy committee met at the end of March to review those. And so now they're, they're here for, this would be the second reading. We have some discussion around those, there was some opportunity for discussion around these policies, and then they would come back to the board meeting and on May 8th for a vote. The policies are, we'll just start with Policy 616, which is School District Most of the changes with all of these policies tend to be statutory updates and, you know, grammatical revisions, which are generally non-controversial. This one had a couple of points of conversation, at least in policy committee. I'll ask Melissa to fill in the gaps here. But, you know, the first item is under, let's see, Section 4, Paragraph A, Subsection 2. And I think the, it's, it's basically a, a paragraph around the establishment of the Instructional Program Review Committee. The original language here were that the school board establishes that committee. The reality of that in our district is that we have three school board associated committees there. The Finance and Policy, Community Engagement, sorry, the Finance and Long Range Planning, Policy and Community Engagement Committees. And the reality of this committee is that it's actually created really around administrative work. And so it's a, it's a language clarification that the school board has directed the superintendent and the administration to create that policy review committee. And then there are some other, that's, that's one component of, of change that was ripe for discussion. And then I think, was there another area, Melissa? Or was that kind of the core question?
I think that was the core question.
Yeah. There was another component in here, too, where we realized that the, the IPR committee should have a school board member as part of that process. So that's more of a, now a compliance issue, I think, for the school board moving forward. But are there any questions or comments otherwise about this policy? I wanted to explain that edit.
Yeah, I just wondered if, to your point, Kyle, because of the identification of a school board member representative under Force C, that actually conflicts with an existing policy that we revised within the last couple of years, I think, around the policies, the committees of the school board. Because in that one, we had identified, or at that time, it had listed a school board member as part of that, too. And then we, as a board, had discussed and revised that to remove that. So there's just some incongruency between what would go, you know, what would be stated in this one and that.
Did we discuss removing us? You'll have to help me remember back that conversation.
Yeah, we did. We agreed that that was, that that was more of an administrative committee and that the reports from the IPR come to the board for review and ultimate approval, but that we would not have a school board member on the IPR as a committee. So whether or not that's a discussion we want to have, I, I'm just pointing it out for the purposes of this policy. I don't know if that's something before we approve this one and have the final reading if we want to put as a, a future agenda item or get that so that they're not conflicting with one another.
Is, sorry, you're, you're reminding me, there's a, you're saying there's a policy that says that, is there a policy that says that there won't be a school board member on this? Or was it just a discussion and we agreed to take it off of this at that time?
No, there's a policy.
Yeah. Well, just, just to clarify, so the, that was part of the, because IPR was in, so the policy that Hannah's talking about, I can't remember what policy it is. But when we went through the process about two years ago, we cleaned that up because that was not updated when the previous board worked with Dennis and basically took all board members off of advisory boards and only worked on board-level committees, which were finance, public engagement, executive committee, and policy. At that time, so it's probably been four, five, six years since a board member served on IPR. Because when, when that took place, all the board members stepped off of, because there was a number of committees that board members were actually on beyond that. And the board at that time pulled it back and only had board members on those governance-level things.
I think you have.
So was it, so the, the board member not being on IPR actually predated that conversation? Because when we looked at that policy, it still, it still had IPR as a board, as a board committee, even though in practice, that hadn't been the case for probably two, three years, so.
And I'm trying to find it, because I feel like we found it at one time, you and I, when we were talking about it.
I'll find it.
And now, maybe Mary Ann knows which category it's in, but we probably.
Do we need to remove C from this then, just to be in compliance with that one?
Yeah, that's the, that's what I was saying, is that, yeah, we have the one that.
Okay. And I was trying to remember if there was a statutory language that that would have conflicted with, but I can't seem to find that. So I don't want policies to be in conflict with one another for certain.
I'm checking the school board ones.
Oh, here, it's Policy 213.
Right, school board committees. Yep. So that's the one that we.
And that states that school board members would not be on advisory committees?
Well, we revised this in 622. And to what Jason just described, it had a list of several. And this was when we really cleaned it up so that it was just, no, these are the committees.
Yep, I remember this. Yep.
And IPR was, I think, included in that at the time. And we talked about school board members a part of not just IPR, but some of these other ones that, in our policies, they had been listed as members of several of them.
Yeah, it, it just says, "The school board hereby appoints the following standing committees: Community Engagement, Executive, Long Range Policy and Executive Committee." So I don't know if it's necessarily in conflict to have a board member on IPR. I can just share what the practice had been with the work from Dennis.
Another option we had discussed at the policy committee meeting, too, was the fact that we could remove it so it's not in conflict, but that if there were board members who wanted to attend, we, that is completely fine, too, that they can still get the information and know when the meetings are and attend. We just have to be careful that there wouldn't be a quorum.
Quorum, right. I can't see that there would be any harm in a board member just like attending and being informed and serving, contributing to conversation at an IPR meeting.
Yeah, and most of the information that goes to IPR comes to the board in the following meeting. Usually not too far from those meetings comes the information.
But sometimes it's nice to be there in person and, and meet who's on that committee and.
And participate in the conversation.
Know the process. Just to know. I don't know if we need to have a designated board member, though, because it is open, that anyone can attend, like any parent can, correct? Any parent can attend that meeting?
Absolutely. We will gladly take people on that committee. And they, but we do have a list where we send reminders out to people and they get the active, people get the participation or those who want it. But yep.
And you're looking to like, for people to be on it for the next year, 23, 24, right? Did I see that? That was on the agenda, right? Okay. So people can be involved in that.
I guess I agree, yeah, with Jacqueline. And just that, it sounds like our opportunity to attend and participate is there, but it feels like, at least with the clarification we had made, because if we were going to, in my mind, if we were going to add this as an option, it would have to be included as part of the assignments where it's open to anybody to indicate interest, that process that we go through at the beginning of the year where everyone says, I want to be on this committee or this policy or represent this, versus kind of an ad hoc. So I'd support, too, just having it not stated as a board member requirement. And that way, we can maintain our current assignments, but recognize that anyone who wants to go and be a part of it is more than welcome to go.
Okay.
To others, what about you, Maggie? Do you have a feeling?
No, I, I just think that we're, are we, we're just basically debating whether we want it to be a mandate that it, and we've already determined that we don't want it to be.
We haven't done that, yeah, for the last four or five years.
We're welcome as parents and board members of these meetings. So the question is, do we need to revise the language of this particular policy?
It sounds like we need to strike, or the, it sounds like there's consensus to strike the Item C from the composition of the Instructional Program Review Committee, but that we are clear that school board members may participate in this Instructional Program Review Committee. Okay.
Would this, I mean, if we're all in agreement of that, would this be deemed the first reading, and then policy committee would do the second revised, and then we could approve it again?
I think this is the second reading.
Well, if we're making changes, though, does it have to go through the process again? Are we good?
Good question.
It doesn't have to go back to the policy committee. We can just bring it next time for approval at the, an action.
We, we do have a policy committee meeting between the dates, but.
Oh, that's right, we do.
We can, we can make the, we can make the compliance if that is a question. Okay.
But we aren't voting to approve this.
Not tonight.
Right, this is just the first.
Nope, this is discussion.
Okay, all right. I just have another, like, Kyle, you were talking about Roman numeral 4, A2. Okay. So where it says, it's going to be revised to say, "The school board directs the superintendent to establish the IPR committee." And I, I just happen to have, because I was, I had looked up for something else, the Minnesota statute, 120B11, oh, man, subdivision 3, says, "Each school board shall establish an advisory committee to ensure active community participation in all phases of planning and improving the instruction and curriculum." I don't probably need to finish the sentence. Anyway, but I just wonder if we might want to make sure we're not in compliant with that.
I, I think we still are compliant with that because I think delegating the superintendent to do that.
We're just delegating, okay.
Yep. It is a good question.
The other thing, and I, when I read through this policy, and I think Kyle said that this is also pointed out, it's also in 606, but like also in the same statute, Minnesota statute 120B11 subdivision 2, number 2, talks about that the school board should adopt a process to assess and evaluate each student's progress towards meeting state and local standard, academic standards, assess and identify, this is the part that I was concerned about, assess and identify students to participate in gifted and talented programs and accelerate their instruction. And I know that prior to me being on board, those programs, some of them had to be cut, but I want to make sure that it's not mentioned specifically in 616, but I want to make sure that we're addressing that in IPR and all of these accountability programs. Like, we're also accountable to those gifted and learning students, that we're not so focused on making sure, we don't want anyone not learning, but we don't want those gifted and talented students being bored. And so just making sure we're not leaving that out of the policy, too, so.
So I think the, I think to, if I hear you right, you're asking, should mention of gifted and talented student programs be included in Policy 616?
Right, or is that like?
Or is it adequately covered in Policy 6?
Because it is in 606, too. But you pointed that out after I had initially asked the question in an email. So, yeah, we just want to make sure that we're reaching every learner, because I know that's our passion and our desire.
Board Chair Christensen, these are MSBA policies, and so this particular one wouldn't be required to have that language in 616 if MSBA didn't put it in there. That's one of the reasons we use their services, to catch all those little things we might otherwise miss.
That was sort of, yeah, so we had an email exchange in the past week, and I suggested that might be the answer. That, well, not that MSBA says so, but, but that, you know, the statutory language says, "School board at a public meeting shall adopt comprehensive long-term strategic, strategic plan to support and improve teaching and learning that is aligned with creating world's best workforce and includes," slip down to Section 2 or Paragraph 2, "a process to assess and evaluate each student's progress towards meeting state and local academic standards, assess and identify students to participate in gifted and talented programs and accelerate their instruction, so forth and so on." I do know that, that, that policy pertaining to world's best workforce does include that language. Whether, I think the question is whether it should also be included in, in this accountability language. My, the, the district meets the statutory requirement to have accomplished that.
Right, right. Because it, most of this, right, that you've just read is in F, number 1, but I just, like, that piece was missing, so. But, anyway. So if it's in statute, are we?
It's already referenced in another policy.
In a different policy. I just didn't know if we wanted to do both, but to Mary Ann's explanation.
Yeah, again, I don't, we typically don't start adding into the policies based off of what MSBA has if it's referenced in something else.
Okay. I think my question is more, are we meeting that policy? Are we meeting that statute for our gifted and learn, gifted learners if we've cut, if we've cut that program? And how are we doing that?
We, we, we have processes for identifying. We have, and then you get specific funding on how to spend it. We meet that criteria through professional development and our learning design.
Gifted and talented, it also include AP college-level rigorous courses.
Gifted and talented also include AP college-level rigorous courses as well as accelerated grade levels and can include even just putting in honors classes, moving kids up in classes. That's all covered under gifted and talented, which we all incorporate with it. So what you saw in the budget realignment a few years ago is, was this very specific program. It wasn't all of our gifted and talented meeting the needs of those gifted and talented students.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification, Lisa.
I didn't.
Yeah, I didn't actually know some of that, so.
I think that was the key issue that I just wanted to highlight, at least, at least with regard to that policy. Are there any other questions about Policy 616? Okay, if there are not, the next policy is 806 that pertains to crisis management. That actually wasn't held because we had questions pertaining to it, but rather because there's a lot of process around how the district is meeting that policy. Again, the changes here are, are detailed and tend to relate to specific regulatory or statutory requirement changes between when this policy was last revised.
2014.
In 2014 and March 2023. So I didn't have anything to call out specifically here myself. Are there any other questions from the board?
Can you explain, I wasn't really understanding the long-term recovery intervention procedures? It seemed, everything else seemed like really detailed and explained, and then like that was a whole new Roman numeral, just like added in there, one, two, three, four. So was that part of the, I don't know, MSBA model?
And to caveat that, I think the issue was, I was looking that up too, there's a, another link to go along with that, which we can't get into because it requires a password.
And Dan, that link is at the very bottom in the cross-references.
Yeah, even when I am.
It's a, it's a, it's a Department of Public Safety link. It's not a, it's not an ISD 192 link, it's a Department of Public Safety, so we.
Oh, sorry, okay, sorry.
It's only cross-reference for him.
And maybe it should be removed if the public and we can't access it.
So I think it gives more information.
About the intervention procedures?
Right, and that's, yeah, and I think that's, if that's what gives more information on that special section, then we kind of need that to know what that information is. I don't, I don't know what that specific section is about. And I think that's what.
So this is, just, this is section three, paragraph I. It says, long-term, long-term recovery intervention procedures. Long-term recovery intervention procedures may involve both short-term and long-term recovery planning, and then a list of physical and structural recovery, fiscal recovery, academic, actually typo there, recovery and social emotional recovery. I kind of agree, it kind of leaves, it's sort of like an incomplete sentence, it leaves us hanging a little bit, but, Dan, you may have other background there?
Well, that I, section I in particular, right, is where you would find more details on that? Is that the, is that the question, right?
Well, the question is that there's a link, so.
I think there's two, two issues.
Yeah, yeah. One is it's open-ended, you don't really understand what it's for, but also there's a link at the bottom that says more information, which we can't access, so.
Yeah, so that, good question about the link piece, that would have come from MSBA as part of the policy piece.
Yeah, and I did try MSBA's site as well, and theirs was the same situation.
But section I wasn't added in from MSBA policy numbers?
This was added from MSBA.
The, the section I was.
Yeah, the section, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting. So section three is preparation before an emergency, just says communication, planning and preparation. All these others have lots of context and detail around them. And then this one, it's just, it's, it's kind of hangs like an incomplete sentence. And we've had that problem with other MSBA policies too, where, I don't remember what it was last year, if you read the paragraph this way, but then you go back, you have to cross-reference different statutes. It might be worth flagging for MSBA for further clarification and maybe something that we have some more language built around it, if we can do that before the May meeting.
The other thing that I wonder though, and this kind of goes back to a discussion that we had with Dennis, you remember maybe last year where he talked about some of the policy work and how a lot of policies include procedures and that there should be a distinction between policies and procedures? So that's why I wondered if MSBA added it in, because is this really just saying that the district shall develop procedures, not that the policy should include them, but much as we have other things, that that should be a task of this? And as written, it's not very clear, right? It just says long-term recovery procedures, so you're like, am I looking for them in here?
It may be that section three needs language that a plan would include the following.
The following, and then our district would develop it, at which case, like any of the procedures we've developed, we would be able to see and see those and review those as a board, but it wouldn't be detailed in here. But yeah, they just seem.
Right.
A little off with how much detail they provide in some and others, so.
Can we just kind of ask MSBA and get a?
Yep, we'll reach out to MSBA on three, or yeah, three I and get more clarification on, is it incomplete? Is it expecting procedures to follow up? So we'll follow up with MSBA.
Yeah, and I'm sorry we didn't catch that in policy committee, but.
Yeah, and we can probably do it before our next meeting too.
You got our back?
We got you.
All right, all right.
Six minds, you know, that's what we're here for.
Any other questions about Policy 806? All right. Our next item relates to Policy 1018. This is a policy that was written and passed in, I think, December of 2021. Yeah, probably December of 2021, and it pertained to a hypothetical compliance with a federal temporary standard vaccination testing and face covering policy, which were never enacted. I believe they were struck down by the US Supreme Court, and now that President Biden has officially ended the COVID-19, or I think the Congress has ended it, emergency, yeah, health emergency, this is a policy that really, we don't need anymore, it was never enacted and can be just removed from the collection, so that's why it's here.
What do you mean, we don't have enough policies?
We want to delete one, so. Add one, delete one. Are there any questions or comments about that? Other than that, we would then come back in May and vote to take that action. Great, thanks. That ends our policy discussion. Last item on the agenda is board remarks. We'll start with the students.
I don't have much to say, but I really enjoyed seeing more of our school showcases, especially tonight, so it was really interesting. And then, yeah, I mean, that's all I have.
Yeah, I wouldn't say a lot about the showcases too. I'd love to see a lot of these newer programs continue. It seems like they're really off to a really great start, especially those students from Dodge and bringing those ideas to the high schools, since they're going to be entering the high school next year, and keeping those things going so that the students can keep exercising these passions that they have.
I'll echo how much fun it was to go see the Little Shop of Horrors show this weekend. I even took my youngest, who is typically not a theater kid, he's a third grader, and now, you know, Dante, who played the Audrey II, is now his hero, and he's been quoting Feed Me nonstop since Sunday, so, to pass it along that he, he was very impressed.
Okay, I will just say, I hope everyone had a really wonderful, relaxing spring break. Our educators, our staff, our administrators have been working so hard, and I just hope they really got the respite and recharging that they needed and so deserved over spring break. I also have really appreciated seeing the showcases and that our team members and students and parents have taken the time to come in because it really does bring to life our mission and all of the things. I'm just revisiting our strategic framework, and it's one of the things that when we can make tangible, not only for ourselves as a board, because it's so easy to get up here and be in the policies and the budgets and some of the harder and difficult decisions, to see it come to life, you know, which is really our goal, and I think also a testament to the leadership, both currently and that's come before us, as well as previous board members who, you know, worked to really build in a culture of learning and innovation and autonomy and freedom to explore and try new things. And we really see that in so many ways, especially through these showcases. So thanks to all of them. I hope everyone has fun at prom that's attending, and good luck to the art students who are moving on to state. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, I'm right in line with the student showcases. Those were amazing. And I guess what I really liked to see was not only the student spark, but also the spark from the teachers and their excitement and how excited they were to be able to share their passions with the students as well, and for raising money for their school, $700, that was impressive. And then also just walking in today, just listening to the music and the, and the colorful displays and actually listening and learning about different cultures was, I really enjoy that. Like I ask a lot of questions, especially about the food, because I love food. And then also, thank you to Kelsey, Amy, and Sarah and Maury for, for putting that, that idea to life. And then also, good to know that you're bringing food trucks in for the conferences. I might just swing over there and use one of those one day, but, so thank you for, for bringing all that in, so that was, that was fun.
I wanted to say congratulations to Mrs. Giegrich on Teacher of the Year. She was my fifth grade teacher, so hopefully that doesn't make her feel too old, but that's awesome. It's well deserved. Same thing with our student presenters. I always say this, I, I always love seeing their projects, but tonight, specifically with the middle schoolers, just really, really cool to see that it's learner-led and it's them trying to create a safe space where all students feel accepted and can represent their cultures, and that was just very cool to see, and they're so articulate. So I appreciate them all coming in. And just speaking of like sparks in general, I know our district has awesome summer camps, the variety of things, my kids do a couple every year, so if you haven't looked into those yet, definitely do, because I know that they fill up too, so.
All right, just a plug for perseverance for learners, to finish the year strong and to not give up to the end. And I have a graduate coming up here soon, and so I just realized today, like, wow, I may start thinking about that. So anyway, I don't know, I just did it last year and now I'm going to do it again, and I'm like, oh, yeah, that's like, we better get going, so.
Surprised you stopped thinking about it.
But first, we got to get through the academic school year, and so I just want all of our learners in the community to, to stay strong. There's so much happening, I just want to talk about legislature a little bit. So much going on, unprecedented amount of bills going through the House and the Senate, and several of the bills have unmended, unfunded mandates in them, the Unemployment Insurance Bill, the, some of the revisions to the Public Employment Labor Relations Act. And I think a lot of times these mandates look good on paper, but they're not necessarily, in my opinion, focused on the students and the administration and the teachers who are on the front lines. So I just, if you, as Jason said, if you're an advocating person and you can reach out to any, anyone, any contact you have in legislature, that would be great. Just want to read from the, the education clause of the Minnesota Constitution says, "The stability of a republican form of government depending mainly upon the intelligence of the people, it's the duty of legislature to establish a general and uniform system of public schools." So it's about educating these learners, these students. Met a man who was a retired teacher, and he asked me a question, he goes, who's the most important person at the school? And I thought it was a trick question, like he was going to stump me or something? And so I, I don't remember even what I stumbled on with my words, or he goes, the students, the students are the most important people. So I hope our legislators can remember that, if anyone's listening, and I hope they got my emails. Anyway, they are proposing to increase our general education dollars, but I hope that those dollars aren't eaten up by new mandates instead of being directed to our students.
Thank you very much. So normally I speak a lot, but I'm going to go against the trend and speak very little. I just want to thank everyone for the great conversation tonight and for all the work that's gone together. We had a meeting today around academic and, and other measures for the district. That's some great work going on in the district. So thank you, all the board members, for the work that's gone into the year to date, and particularly making today and this meeting tonight possible. Thanks to our students for always sharing their perspectives. Kennedy got to sit through that long conversation today. He's probably second guessing, being an adult. Sorry, I had to tell the joke twice.
I already heard that one.
Anyway, I appreciate it, and look forward to seeing you guys in a few weeks on May 8th. We just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:33.
Second?
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.